Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Stonewall Alliance City Council Candidates Forum. This is our third forum. Our first one was four years ago, and then there was another election, and now there's another election. My name is Jim Peck. I'm the pastor of New Vision United Church of Christ here in Chico and volunteer with the Stonewall Center, especially around this issue. This event, which emerged four years ago following a small group of us that began to deal with hate crime issues in the community, and we began to realize that having our city council candidates address our concerns as the LGBTQ+ and more community is a worthwhile endeavor. The other folks who have been on the planning team are Melody Probstol, Vince Ornellis, and Tom Callum. We also want to thank the California Faculty Association of Chico State for cosponsoring and helping with on-campus publicity. We thank all of you for being here tonight. I ask you to check now to see that your electronic devices are quiet, as quiet as we can get them. Tonight's forum is also being videotaped and broadcast live over community-access television. There are 11 candidates seeking four seats on the Chico City Council. Nine of those candidates are here with us tonight. Shawn Morgan and Loretta Ann Torres are the two candidates who did not respond to our invitation. We are not making any assumptions about why they are not here. You can jump to your own conclusions. There is a handout at the back of the room. There's handouts in a lot of places, but over here on this table, on this side of the room, you'll find a handout with the websites of all of the candidates. You can use this information to learn more about all of the council candidates. That handout also has information about registering to vote. The registration deadline is one week from today, October 24th. Remember to vote on November 24th. No, no, I'm wrong. I'm wrong. I know, I'm wrong. I'm wrong. I'm quoting someone else. Chico City Council has seven members. It meets in this room on the first and third Tuesday of each month at 6:00. Meetings are always open to every citizen of Chico. The next meeting is tomorrow night. Four seats are on the ballot this year. You are being asked to vote for up to four of the 11 candidates. The top four vote-getters become our city council members. All candidates run citywide. The city is not divided into districts. Each council member serves the whole city. The mayor and vice mayor are chosen by the council. Mark Sorenson, who is not on the ballot this year, is our current mayor. Shawn Morgan, who is on the ballot this year, is our current vice mayor. The race is officially nonpartisan. Although a candidate may be endorsed by a political party, that party will not appear on the ballot. Stonewall Alliance is a nonprofit organization that does not endorse any candidate. We do endorse being an informed voter, which is why we are sponsoring this forum. Our city government is the government closest to you, making decisions about your daily life. Police and fire services, streetlights, business climate, traffic control, parks and recreation, building codes, and many, many other areas of public policy are the responsibility of the city council. What the city council does matters to you. City council members are your neighbors. You will run into a city council member at a farmer's market, or a soccer game, or at a community event. You will not ever run into the President of the United States at one of these places, ever. Thank you for being here tonight, all of you in the audience, and thank you to the candidates for joining us and for being willing to take on the responsibility of leading our city. We are grateful to Sue Peterson of the Communications Faculty at Chico State for being our moderator. Please join me in giving our candidates and our moderator a round of applause.
Thank you. My name is Sue Peterson. I'm the Director of the Speech and Debate Program at CSU Chico, and I also work in the Communications Department. And I would also like to thank you all for being here. City government is an important place for your voices to be heard. It's one of the few places where you have actual access face-to-face with people who are representing you. And I appreciate the candidates coming out tonight and being willing to share their views with the audience. So without further ado, I'm first going to go over the procedures for this evening. Each candidate will make an introductory statement. Each candidate will then be asked four questions, which have been decided on from the planning team. We then have time for two questions from the audience, so please be considering things that you might want to ask the candidates as they're answering the questions, or that you might have come in with tonight. All questions relate to public policy areas the city council deals with. For example, you will not be asked your views on marriage equality, because that is not something that you deal with. You can tell us, but that's not something that we will ask you. Audience members have been given cards. We have runners who will collect them during the third question, so that's the time to have your questions written out, because we'll have people coming around to collect those from you. Jim, Vince, and Melody will review them and choose two for the candidates to address. So, audience members, be sure that you're on task with that and you're passing them to the edges so they can be collected. You may submit more than one question, audience members, but please write them so that they are legible, so that they can quickly go through them and make sure that we're asking the correct question. During the last part of the forum, you will each be given an opportunity to ask a question of one other candidate about something she or he said during tonight's forum, so actually engaging each other. To make that work, we're now going to have you draw a name, just to make it fair, so that we're not targeting individuals. This is the candidate that you will be asked to engage later. The questioner will have 30 seconds to come up with a question, so you might want to jot down notes as people are speaking with things that you might want to ask them. And this part will only be included if time allows, because we're on a 90-minute schedule. To the audience, please do not applaud. Applaud, cheer, hiss, wave signs, make gestures, or other public displays of affection or disaffection during the forum. Candidates really shouldn't do any of that either. The forum will last 90 minutes. We're not planning for a break, although I will take discretion to have one if I feel like it's needed. You will have one minute for your introductory statement, one minute for your responses to each of the questions, and one minute for your closing statement. We have timekeepers right here in the front. One of them has a card that has 30 seconds, 15 seconds, time, and stop. And we would appreciate you actually stopping, just so it's fair and everyone has an equal amount of time to speak.
Nobody with a hook?
No.
Okay.
But we might yell at you. And there may be an air horn, from what I hear, so. You are not required to use all your time, so once you're finished, don't feel like you have to fill that space. You're welcome to stop speaking. Please remember to turn on your microphones. There's a green light on the microphone that lets you know when it's on, and this is from Jim. Turning off the microphone will allow you to mutter things under your breath without us hearing them. Otherwise, you might be broadcasting that to everyone. The seating arrangement is based on the order in which you accepted Stonewall's invitation to participate. Mr. Stone was the first to accept, so he is seated on this side, and Mr. Ori was the most recent. Opening statements will follow in this order, and then subsequent speaking orders will be different each time to give everyone equal access to a first position. We have created nine segments, meaning that each of you will get to go first, and each of you will get to go last. So, that's the way they've been arranged. All right, any questions?
I'm sorry, Jim was passing out names when you talked about time limits, and I was paying more attention to the name.
That's fine. All of the speeches are one minute long, so introductory statements, answers to the questions. The only thing that's different is when you engage the person's name who you drew, you have 30 seconds to formulate a question or a comment. All right, any other questions before I begin? So we'll go ahead and get started with the introductory statements from each candidate. One minute, and we're going to go again in the order of accepted invitations, starting with Randall Stone.
Ooh, one minute. Okay. Now, my name's Randall Stone. I've been a 22-year resident in the city of Chico. I've owned my own business, a professional financial management firm, for the last 13 years. I am also a developer of affordable housing communities. My most recent project was the Bidwell Park Apartments on Highway 32, just west of the Valero, just west of Highway 99. So I address and understand vagrancy and homelessness issues. I understand budget concerns and financial management issues. And my entire personal, professional, and academic life has been dedicated towards municipal governance. I have a master's in public administration and bachelor's degrees in finance and economics. I secured, over the last four years, $4 million to Chico's general fund by reforming the budget and rolling back salaries and benefits. I protected neighbors from a growing crime wave in my community through Nextdoor.com. I created the Sunset Neighborhood and Chico Neighborhood on Sunset, or Nextdoor.com, and kept caper acres open with alternative custody supervision. Thank you.
Wow, I've felt that. Thank you, Stonewall. My name is Tammy Ritter, and I appreciate having this opportunity to introduce myself. I have served for the past four years as one of your city councillors. My educational background, I have earned a master's in educational psychology and a master's in restorative justice youth counseling. I have over 25 years' experience in the social services as the shelter director at Catalyst, as the founding executive director at the Torres Community Shelter, and as the executive director of Habitat for Humanity of Butte County. I currently serve as the director of family court services for Glen County Superior Court, where I offer mediation services and child custody recommending. I am one of the founders of the new Chico Youth Court, if anyone's looking for a volunteer opportunity, and my proudest accomplishment is I am the mom of a very active four-year-old.
Good evening. My name is Anne Schwab. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to share my views with you tonight. In my past 12 years of serving as a Chico City Council member, I've been dedicated to ensuring the continuation of core city services, supporting an economic climate to provide public safety, parks, roads, housing, and a high quality of life in neighborhoods, and promoting inclusivity in decision-making. Serving as mayor for two terms from 2008 to 2012, I've represented the city on city, county, and regional committees. My knowledge, experience, and leadership has strengthened Chico as an exceptional place to live. My top priority is ensuring we have professional, responsible police and fire departments to keep all of Chico's community members safe. I believe in community service in my professional and public life. I'm the director of CAVE, president of Chico Velo Cycling Club, and I volunteer for ParkWatch. I understand the importance of small business and value downtown as the heart of the community. My husband and I have owned campus bicycles for 35 years.
Thank you for the opportunity to participate in tonight's forum. My name is Giovanni Traceri. I am a father of two boys, six and eight years old. They are the motivation for me running, for two reasons. One, I want Chico to be a safe place for everyone. Public safety is going to be my number-one priority. Number two, the tone of politics. It's embarrassing for me to have two children look at the tone of politics today, and it's not just our national politics. It goes all over the place, the way that we talk and engage with each other. So I'm running to have a different type of campaign, and to give them a vision of what Chico could be like if we engaged each other with respect, compassion, and understanding. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Lisa Dwardy, and I am the Client Experience Coordinator at Valley Oak Veterinary Center. I hope to, my goal is to house the homeless, improve our infrastructure, bring more healthcare providers to the city, improve our public safety, make this place a great place to live and raise a family, and so we can all feel safe. That's all.
Hi, everybody. My name is Mercedes Macias, and I'm so pleased to be here tonight and to see who has shown up. It's such a wonderful thing to see people willing to engage in this conversation, whatever their stance may be. I've come fresh from Free Thought Day in Sacramento, a huge event, and I promote secular rights and the separation of church and state, and will be voting as such. I'm accessible to all of you, anyone at any time. I live in Chico. I walk around a lot. I work at Has Been's, and I volunteer a great deal. You can find me on Facebook, and I'd be happy to chat with any of you about anything. I'm looking forward to the questions tonight. Thanks.
Hello, everybody. My name is John Scott, and I came to Chico 38 years ago on a motorcycle, with hair down to about here. As you can tell, there's been a couple of changes. There's been some changes in the community, too. When I first came here, I found Chico to be incredibly a fun town, a place where, you know, a young person could have a whole lot of fun and avoid most of the trouble, and have a pretty good time. I have watched the town get progressively more and more uptight, I guess is the quickest description I could give. I'm running for city council because I don't like the direction that things have taken place over the last several years. I think we can do better. I know we deserve more, and I'm here to shake up the status quo. I promise, if I end up here, it'll be different. Thank you.
Hello, all you beautiful and open-minded people. I'm glad you invited me here. My name's Jeffrey Glatz. I'm here. I'm not on the council now, and that's why I'm running, because I'm very unhappy with how things are going. My wife and I have been in Chico for about 15 years now. She grew up in the Durham area. I made the bulk of my career in the entertainment industry down in LA. I've been working in the motion picture industry, the television industry. I've run my own production company. Currently, we own a home decor and home accessories business here in Chico. That's international. We sell it to everybody, from Williams Sonoma to Pottery Barn, et cetera. But my main concern in getting involved with the city of Chico is the public safety issues. I've had a lot of experience with that personally. A lot of our friends and family have experienced that personally, and I'm here to hopefully make a difference and help you all out in that respect. So I hope you'll all have me here to listen as well and learn for what you guys have on your mind and what your concerns are as well. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Carl Ori. I moved to Chico in 1974 and was elected to the city council in 1977. I'm 26-years-old. Mary, my treasurer, Linda Morrison Ori, she's a nurse practitioner, probably better-known to many of you than I am. We raised two great kids. In 1981, I was re-elected to the council. In 1983, I was chosen by the council to be mayor. In the 30 years since, I've worked in affordable housing. I'm the Western Regional Director of a national group called Housing Assistance Council. In the community, what I've been involved with is that I saved the farmer's market from eviction. I am leading the effort to move the Chapman Junkyard out of 20th Street, and I'm working hard with businesses to bring commercial air service back to Chico. Jobs is my number-one priority. I believe commercial air service is essential for us to bring good jobs and retain good jobs in Chico.
All right. Thank you all for your introductions. So now we're going to move on to question one, and I'll recognize each of you in the order in which you appear on my list. The question to the council candidates, displayed here in the council chambers on the interior wall, is a list of priorities for the city of Chico. Please choose one of those priorities, comment on it, and tell us why that priority you choose is important to Chico's LGBTQ+ community. You'll have one minute to respond. The first respondent will be Tammy Ritter.
Well, I'm going to pick public safety, as I'm sure lots of us are going to do. My thoughts on public safety and why this is important is, I've been saying this for a long time, is we need to expand our definition of what public safety is. Public safety is not just our police officers. It is not just our firefighters. Public safety also is public health. Right now in Chico, we have a major housing crisis. We have a number of people who are experiencing lack of homes. We have a number of people who are experiencing mental health crises, and we have police officers that are responding to those people. So our definition of public safety has to broaden. We have to be including behavioral health workers and emergency workers who are helping deal with and diffuse situations, instead of making this something that our police officers deal with.
All right, Anne, you're next.
Certainly, I believe that public safety is the most important concern to the LGBTQ+ community and to our whole community. I've spent a lot of time outreach-ing to different communities and talking to them and finding out from them what their concerns are. The police chief had a forum community meeting right after the Orlando shootings to do outreach and find out what it is that concerns were. So it was, that wasn't the answer. That wasn't the end-all, but I think it was the beginning of that conversation, having the ability to form relationships and partners with communities to find out what those concerns are, police department training and understanding. I had a meeting with the chief, oh, my time is up. Talk to me later about the meeting I had with the chief in a group while I was mayor four years ago. Thank you.
All right, Giovanni.
Thank you. A few years ago, our police department staffing was slashed dramatically. I don't know if you all have been in a situation where you show up to work and you're short-staffed. It really puts a strain on the entire staff. The police department went through a period of deep, the low morale. I mean, they did not have the support they needed, and this community, and in this city, crime increased. In 2014, I wrote the police staffing plan to get the city to the level of police officers that we need. That is primarily why I'm running. We are near three of that four-year staffing plan, and we do not have a plan. The city council has not provided a plan on how we're going to fund that. Ideas have been presented on the staffing plan, but it has not been addressed yet. So I am running because I believe that we need to have an appropriate level of police staffing. Thank you.
Lisa?
Of course, public safety is important to all of us, and we need to improve our infrastructure as well and have streetlights, and we need to pay attention to one another and watch out for each other. But I believe that if we all work together, we can make a change and help each other and make this a safe community for everybody.
Public safety is a concern. That's not what I'm personally going to focus on tonight. What my viewpoint, my understanding of the issues are, is that isolation is a huge, huge issue for not just the LGBTQ+ community, for all of us as human beings, and that is my largest concern. So I'm for housing first to, oh, gosh, let me back up. So when I look down this thing, I see community development and the environment. To me, that means making environments that are safe for everybody. So when you don't feel that you have the support in your circles, you will be able to find that. That's my biggest priority, is making sure that people feel that they have people that they can go to, places where they can commiserate about the sorrow that we have about not being connected with each other. That is my biggest priority, and I don't know what the individual situations are of every single LGBTQ+ person. And I am aware of that, and I want to acknowledge that. I want to hear stories. I recently heard a story about a trans person, a trans woman, at the Secular Advocacy Day, and she shared something that I had never considered before. So I'm always learning new things about this issue, and I don't, aside from that, I think, thank you.
Well, Mercedes kind of grabbed my ideal, which is, you know, I tend to go to public safety, but I think community really is the issue, in particular for LGBTQ, if I've got the acronym correct. I have spoke to many people within the community, and they tell me that there are times where they don't feel comfortable being themselves publicly, and, you know, that kind of sucks. And I think we need a community where everybody can feel like they can be exactly who they are and not be disrespected, or insulted, or, God help, assaulted. So we need to build a community that's inclusive of everyone, because no matter who you are, you're a brother and you're a sister. And I want to take care of all of my brothers and sisters. That's it.
We're all part of the same community, so I'm going to address the public safety, because it hits home to me pretty darn hard. For an example, last Thursday morning, I'm at the park, right below the sycamore field at the dog beach with a group of other people. My dog's playing, having a good time, barking. It wakes up a couple of transients sleeping there. So what happens? This girl gets up and starts screaming at me that I'm deserving the peace. Going beyond that, I say, okay, now I got to call the Rangers. And then she says she's going to threaten to beat my face in. Okay, okay, now I got to call the police. So then, at this point, she's getting up to leave. So then, of course, I call the police. And then she threatens to shoot my white ass. This happened at the park last Thursday. Today, over near the Best Buy area, someone tried to, called in again a complaint about some transients sleeping in the doorway. This person was assaulted by these people. Public safety-- Public safety is an issue that must be dealt with now. It cannot be talked about any longer. We need to take care of this issue now. It affects everybody in this room, it affects everybody in our community. It's coming home. Thank you.
Let me stretch the term "community development" to include healthcare, not normally something that you would think a council member is involved with, but I think we really are at a crisis level here in town. You really can't get a primary provider. The clinics are, well, I shouldn't talk too much about the clinics, but, you know, they're very difficult to get into, very difficult to get good healthcare. I would, for example, as a council member, work with N-Log, encourage N-Log to open another primary health center. My wife volunteers at Shalom Center, I should too, and we need more of those kind of opportunities of getting the medical community involved and providing healthcare. So I think that that's the kind of thing that a council member, an active council member, can get involved with and make a difference.
Well, I appreciate the question. You know, I'm not going to say "public safety," and there's a simple reason why. None of those operate without finance. None of those can be addressed without the right budget considerations. Now, I'm a victim of a violent crime. My wife and I woke up at 5:30 in the morning to a 17-year-old kid standing at the edge of our bed getting ready to attack my wife. It's pretty disconcerting when that happens, and I've got to tell you, crime is obviously a consideration of mine. That happened in 2011. He was extricated from my home. I'm also, I agree with Mr. Ory about healthcare needs. What LGBTQ+ people are reporting is that medical staff doesn't understand their needs, particularly for transgender folks. That's a big deal, and that's important. As the Vice President of the Shalom Fleet Clinic, we see that type of thing quite often. But what we're doing right now is we're sending police officers at an average cost of $166,000 a year to do the work of a social worker, which is something that my wife does. That's where we've discombobulated exactly what we should be addressing by sending police officers to a situation that needs the work of a social worker. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. This next question was sent to candidates prior to the forum. We asked for and received written responses, which are on a handout at the back and will also be posted on Stonewall's social media. So if you're interested in a longer-than-a-one-minute response, but for tonight, we'll ask you for a one-minute response to the question. What do you think is the most important issue facing lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and gender and sexual minority community? And what, as a city council member, would you do to address it locally? Again, you'll have one minute to respond, we'll start with Anne.
Thank you. I believe the most important issue facing the LGBTQ+ community is the need to be safe and free from discrimination and rejection for who they are and who they love. It's interesting that Mr. Glatz said that he wasn't happy with the things, the way things are going on the city council. That's exactly why I'm running, because I'm not happy with the way things are going on the city council. I've wrote with a group of community members a diversity action plan for the city of Chico to increase inclusivity in government, but since the last election, the majority of council has changed, and we have not been able to progress on our diversity action plan, which would require training of all department members, all city personnel in something like ally training, and increased awareness of what needs are for the LGBTQ+ community. I'd like to see the diversity action plan taken off the shelf, and we need a new council to do that.
The LGBT community is a diverse and broad community, made up of different races and ethnicities from across the political and religious spectrum. I don't want to tell you what the most important issues are, but I can provide observations that I believe we all share. We need to change the tone in which we engage each other in meaningful dialogue on issues facing our city. In this election cycle particularly, we are witnessing a disastrous decline of civility and leadership in seeking collaborative solutions for the common good. The LGBT community knows all too well the devastating effects of intolerance, toxic language used to demean and belittle one another, a disdain for diversity of all kinds, including the diversity of thought and opinions, and bullying in all its forms. So my commitment is to change the tone of our city council and politics. The issues facing Chico are far too important to be involved in the petty politics of personal political egos and toxic communication. We need a strong leader whose approach to problem-solving is collaborative and bipartisan. My commitment to you is not to tell you what the most pressing issues facing the LGBT community is, but to learn from you about what the most pressing issues are facing the LGBT community. Thank you.
Lisa.
All right, I'll just read a little bit, so excuse me while I read what I wrote. I believe that the biggest issue facing the LGBTQ+ community in Chico is acceptance. These individuals tend to be ostracized from the greater Chico population because they are either misunderstood or represented fundamental changes to our society that some residents might find intimidating. So that's just some of what I wrote, so you can read the rest of it.
I'm going back again to this issue of displacement and isolation. I read this letter, thank you very much for handing this to me, and it breaks my heart, and it relates to me personally because my mother actually came out as being in love with a woman a couple of years ago, and she was totally shut out from her siblings, and I want to speak about how much we can do as a community that doesn't require finance. The government cannot solve everything, we need to talk to each other. It's as easy as, huh, I don't know that person, let's friend them on Facebook, let's talk to them, let's go over and ask them a question, say hi to them, look at them as a human being. I think those are the biggest issues that we need to address as humans. It's not, what is the government going to do? Because sure, I'm with secular advocacy, and we're watching for who's voting in our assembly and who's voting in our senate for these separation of church and state issues to ensure that everybody has equal rights, but there's a lot that we can do as individuals, and I'm very concerned with that. Thanks.
Well, as a, basing it on a city issue, I think what leaders, people tend to follow the example that leaders set, and there has to be no tolerance, no tolerance at all for anybody showing bigotry, and I mean that in terms of verbal or non-verbal. Anytime that any issue is in front of the council and there is, you know, bigotry, either implied or direct, somebody's got to stand up and call bullshit. I'll be that one, I'll be that person. You know, if it's not tolerated at this level, if people know they're going to get called out for it, you start to bring an end to it. Obviously, that's not the end solution, but that's what I'll do as a city council person. I see the time thing, so I could go on for a while, but I guess I'll stop. Thank you.
First of all, this is, it's not a difficult question for me, but I was in Hollywood for a long time, so I didn't really, I just, I don't, I can't, I've never walked in your shoes, but I've worked with many gay people, I've worked for many gay people, so I've never, it's always just been part of my life. It's not like it's to be a surprise, so I'm sorry to hear all the things and all the hate that you guys feel. I can't ever say I've walked in your shoes, I have not. I cannot imagine what that would be like. So what I want to hopefully do is embrace everyone. I mean, our city, this is an open community, it's a wonderful community, and I think we need to embrace everybody in our community. I think that's the most important thing the city can do, is not differentiate from anybody. Now, one of the things that I thought was really interesting in some of the little minor research I did was the issues with the homeless children and the transgender children and these kind of things. This seems to be an issue that I think we need to be at the forefront of, because they're the kids that are getting involved with this now, getting kicked out of their homes. These are the people I think that need our direct attention as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Let me just make an observation, I hadn't thought about this before, that we've enjoyed having, well, we've had gay council members for, I think, 16, 18 years, and if this election goes the wrong way, it'd be the first time we have not had a council member who was gay. And I think that leadership and that perspective is very important to have on the council, and I would urge you to support those candidates that are gay, so we continue to have that representation and that knowledge.
You know, I don't worry so much about the overt attacks on the LGBTQ+ community. I worry about the subtle attacks. I mean, no question, violence against people in a protected class is a big deal, and the state of California has tremendous restrictions on that, but it's the day-to-day discrimination. It's the hidden discrimination, when you're passed over for a job because you're LGBTQ. In this very forum, 10 years ago, I believe, maybe 12 years ago, there were three council members that fought against the first LGBTQ+ mayor, and they said, oh, he doesn't have the time in order to address this. It's that type of subtle nonsense that really is the problem. And that subtlety also transmutates to our downtown. Our LGBTQ+ brothers and sisters have to deal with people, the fear of walking down the street holding hands downtown after dark, and cars driving by with cat calls and yelling. You know, those are the types of things that I worry about that are concerns. My time's up.
So you're a better person than I. I do read in when someone doesn't show up to a forum, so I'll just say that. I think one of the biggest issues is homelessness, I'm going to keep coming back to that. We know that 20% to 40% of homeless youth identify as LGBTQ, and that's an issue. Already have a lack of affordable housing in this town, so we need to have appropriate housing, and we need to have housing that's sensitive to each individual's needs. My commitment is that I will continue to be an outspoken member of this community. I will participate in roundtables, in town halls, in events. I will continue to advocate for equal rights and equal protections, and to use my fortunate position to ensure that LGBTQ issues are addressed.
Okay, we're moving on to question three, so I'd just like to remind the audience that we'll be taking audience questions very soon. Question three is, access to restrooms by transgender persons and gender non-conforming persons has emerged as a public policy issue. How do you understand this concern, and what steps could the city take to address this concern? Again, one-minute responses, and we'll begin with Giovanni.
Sorry, can you, I know that was a long question, can you repeat that? I want to make sure.
That's fine, yes, definitely. Access to restrooms by transgender persons and gender non-conforming persons has emerged as a public policy issue. How do you understand this concern, and what steps could the city take to address this concern?
The, I got 30 seconds to think about it, right? The city needs to have policies that are not discriminating towards any of our community members. No discrimination. So when we talk about access to restrooms for transgender people, I believe that we can't go down the road like a lot of our cities around the country have gone and made this a fight. We need to be able to accommodate our community members, and do that through public policy. So that's my answer.
I think this is really important, that they have a place to go to the restroom where they can feel safe and comfortable, and I believe that we could have some of these bathrooms downtown. You know, it's really important that they can use the restroom and feel safe. I really believe that.
This is a very, very serious issue, because something that we take for granted all the time with cis privileged is going to the bathroom. You say, okay, which one am I? This term "brothers and sisters" always concerns me every time I hear that. It's called a rainbow for a reason, there's not two colors, there's not three colors, there's a bunch of colors, and there's a bunch of shades. And so when someone says, I can't go to the bathroom, I can't exercise a basic human right and have the dignity to live, that's very concerning. And I think that as a city council, we can absolutely enact laws that encourage our community businesses to promote gender-neutral restrooms, because first of all, most of them are single-stall, what's the problem? I have never been pants-checked, and I don't think anybody should be. You're in there, you're doing your business, we're all human beings, let's be treated as such. I think we could make a statement, and I think we should. Thank you.
Well, Mercedes, you kind of stole my answer. To be honest with you, sometimes I think people make really complicated issues out of things that are pretty simple. Instead of having the word "men" and the word "women" or "boys," "girls," "ladies," "gentlemen," how about just the word "bathroom"? Because that's what it is, okay? You go to the bathroom, you do whatever you got to do in the bathroom, which, as Mercedes points out, is generally taking care of your business. You know, these things are trumped up to be big issues when they're not really a big issue. I mean, think about this. Every one of you, except for those of you that are homeless, probably has a bathroom in your home, and my guess is, it's used by both genders. So I don't see why we can't just have the word "bathroom" in public locations. That's it. Thanks.
Following on Mercedes and John, it is, I mean, as John just said, I mean, it's a matter of just creating the single bathroom. In shopping malls, I guess they call it a "family restroom." You know, you go to a mall, and you have ladies, the men's, and then the family, which is a single-stall restroom that anybody can use. So I do believe, you know, the city can get into things, like if you're building, especially in public areas, if you're going to build bathrooms, you need to include the single-stall issue with the locks on the doors, so that everybody can feel safe and use that single bathroom, so it doesn't become an issue of going into a bathroom. Additionally, a lot of the restaurants around town are already open and very, you know, very liberal in their thinking and allow anybody to use their restrooms, so I think that's an option as well. So I don't think we have to overcomplicate it. I think any new development or any new building could have that clause built in that you have to provide restrooms for everybody.
I understand the issue and the reason for folks to feel safe and comfortable, and I think we should just do it. Do gender-neutral bathrooms rather than open up in some kind of, well, I just think that's the least you should be able to expect of a great community like Chico.
I agree somewhat with Mr. Ory. You know, this is an issue that is extremely difficult for other communities throughout the state of California and across the country, but it's less of a concern in this community because we are much more tolerant and much more accepting. I hate the word "tolerant," as a matter of fact, like it's obligatory. We're human beings, and people go to the bathroom, and they need to go to the bathroom where they feel most comfortable, and that this community should be accepting of that, I think largely is.
So I think this is a really important issue, but I have a very different experience because I've served as the Chair of Internal Affairs for the past four years, and one of the issues that just recently came before us is the bathrooms in the Downtown Plaza, and I have been advocating that we have all-gender bathrooms, but I can tell you that it's not going over real well. So this is one of those areas where I am one voice on the council, saying, this is something we need, and unfortunately, I'm not making any headway. They are progressing with the bathroom in the Downtown Plaza with a men's room and a women's room, and that is the current plan. So if people feel as outraged about that as I do, it would be really good to let your city councilors know and to attend Internal Affairs when we do the bathroom update.
Thank you. There were two parts to the question. One, what do I understand the issue to be? And I understand the issue is the fear of going into an enclosed space away from the public eye, that a person can be attacked, bullied. It's an unsafe situation for someone, transgendered person, to go into a bathroom. What can the city do? The city creates policies for public restrooms, for private restrooms, restaurants. We can enact policies, not only for the city, for public places where there are restrooms to have genderal... to have gender-neutral bathrooms and single use, but also we can require stores, restaurants, those types of situations to have the general neutral bathrooms as well.
All right, thank you. Question number four. What steps would you take to move our city government to better reflect and include the broader diversity of Chico's population? And one minute again to respond, and we'll start with Lisa.
Did you say me?
No. Unless you want to go first. Okay, I think the steps we could take is to listen to one another, get the issues that people face, try to come together to make it a better place. And if we can address those issues, we can make it a lot safer for all of us, not just for all the communities. And I really must say, it's really, I wish we were all as one, rather than dividing us into LGBT community and the, you know, and other people. I think we all live together, and we should be all treated as such.
Could you please repeat the entire question?
Yes.
Thank you.
What steps would you take to move our city government to better reflect and include the broader diversity of Chico's population?
Well, thank you. The first thing I can do is take out papers to run for city council. So I've done that, so check that mark off. Second thing is that I'm opening up dialogue, trying to create bridges between communities by being active in several different volunteer organizations, including environmental issues, including Park Watch, including water quality, and LGBTQ plus rights. So I feel like that is what I can do, the steps I'm taking, whether or not I'm elected to council, I continue to take those steps. And I believe that we all should be involved where our passions lie. It takes all kinds. We need everybody to get up and say, "I'm interested in this area," and go out and see who else is interested in that area, and how we can unite as a community. I do think what Lisa said about being segregated is very sad, but I think that that's the reality for people right now. They go where they're safe, they go where they're welcome, they go where they feel loved. And if we cannot, as a greater community, start from the leaders and listen to the people and make that an inclusive community, that segregation will continue, and we can't have that.
Well, I think, you know, to be inclusive, you know, in the electorate process, it's pretty easy. You know, people, people run, and the community votes for, for, you know, as they see fit. But the city council is responsible for appointing lots of different committees and commissions and things of that nature. And I think it's really, really important that when committees and commissions and things of that nature are being put together, when they're being appointed by council members, that the opportunity to be on these, these commissions, to be on these, these groups is, the invitation is placed out to everybody. Now, if you're only advertising in one spot, you're only going to get that, you know, that metric. And I think you really need to reach out to the entire community, so you can make sure that each one of those groups is fully inclusive of our entire community. There's that sign again. I need four or five minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Could you repeat it again? I listened to everybody's answers, and it just...
What steps would you take to move our city government to better reflect and include the broader diversity of Chico's population?
Well, the fact that we're having an election right now is the best way to do that. You can choose who you believe to, who you want to represent your rights. I'm hoping, you know, because it's a local election, that national agendas don't play a part, and you should be open-minded and look for compassionate people, whether that person be from whatever side of the aisle you might consider them to be. It's who's the compassionate person? Who's going to take care of you? Who's going to take care of you and your families? Who's going to take care of your children? I think this is an important thing. We have a lot of issues going on in Chico that are beyond this talking and this overall everyone-needs-to-get-along philosophy. We have concerns now that we need to address. So again, this is your right right now to elect who you want to represent you. Thank you for your time.
Chico has a great tradition of involvement and inclusiveness, if that's the right term. And I, it's an interesting perspective to come back to this intense experience 35 years later and see things that have dropped off and are not working right. One of the things that we founded as a community is we're a commission-based system. We don't just have seven, most have five, seven council members. We have, we used to have six or seven commissions of seven people each that would all meet monthly, airports, parks, I'm going to get them mixed up, planning. We had, when I was elected, first elected, we had a social service commission. In the first meeting, they disbanded it, but I was on the council. But we, if we were to expand then and get everyone involved, we have a city now that is cutting back these commissions and feel like it's something you have to get through. We've had a planning commission that has canceled half of their meetings this last year. So I think you'll see with me 49 people involved in running this city, not just seven.
Well, we can start with, again, as Councilmember Schwab mentioned, the Diversity Action Plan. But probably most important is showing up. You know, one candidate is batting zero over four years to any LGBTQ plus event. Zero times they have shown up to anything. That's the Orlando vigil, which I helped organize, was so offended and disgusted at what had taken place. I contacted Thomas Kellum, and we got that rolling. I begged my, my LGBTQ plus council colleague to be present, even in her grief at that time, to be involved, and I'm proud that she was involved. My three-year-old son, his first outing, public outing, was, he was four days, four days old, and that was at Chico Pride, and he's been to every single one. And I'm proud to say that I'm, I'm going to do everything in my power to make sure that whatever he ends up being, whatever he sees, for those that don't know, I'm the first Latino council member in the city's history ever elected. And I want to see to it that whatever my son turns out to be, whoever he decides to love, this community will stand by him.
Steps I would take to better reflect Chico's diverse community. Well, the first one would be reelect me. That's the first thing. Your first bisexual Jewish female council member. There's not a lot that, again, we're a policy-setting body. It's what we do. We set policy. And so we can set policies, like the anti-discrimination policy, which we have done with lots of help and involvement from this community. But I really, I echo what Councilor Stone says. It's really, it's really about being here. It's about listening. It's about hearing what's important to people, hearing what people's concerns are, and knowing that you have access to your local representatives. We are a phone call, an email away, and we're very accessible. So it's a step I'd take.
I agree that accessibility, being out in the communities, listening to people, are important, and I, and I do that. I make myself available, and I do reach out to, to really be proactive in finding out answers and being available and mentoring. But I do think, as a city council, we can create policies that make our council more diverse and our government more diverse. One of them, through the Diversity Action Plan, did talk about how we outreach to fill our boards and commissions. Currently, each council member gets to appoint whoever they want to serve on a border commission. Previously, it was a team effort, and more diversity could occur in that arena, and I would like to go back to that. Hiring, we can make a more concerted effort to make sure that we're reaching for diverse candidates. And to keep City Hall open for groups to meet, so they can develop their voice.
This is what I've dedicated much of my life to. During the day, I serve as the Director of Community Engagement at the North Valley Community Foundation. I believe that our community thrives when people, when a diverse group of people engage to solve an issue. That's what we did when we created the Police Staffing Plan. I was the founder of the Downtown Ambassador Program, creating the Chico Children's Museum downtown. We want this to be a place where everyone is welcome to participate in the governance of our city. I don't think the solutions to all our problems are going to come from this council chambers. The solutions lie in this room, but it's not up here. It's with you. And so I truly believe that that is the answer to all of our community's challenges. The more people that get involved and engaged, the more successful our community becomes.
Okay, we're now going to move to the two questions from the audience. So I'll ask the first question. You'll have one minute to respond again, and we'll start this round with Mercedes. LGBTQ people of color feel uneasy about the police, especially after recent police shootings of people of color. How would you respond to these LGBTQ people of colors' concerns?
Thank you for the question. I'm so grateful to have the opportunity to participate in this discussion, first of all. I just feel very, very honored to be here. As a council person, if I were to be elected, something that we can do is train our law enforcement officers and have that transparency that's giving them sensitivity training, that's giving them the information that they need. It all comes back to education. If we don't inform ourselves as individuals, and if we don't speak to other people when they say something that's unjust, that's the issue. It's being silent against the suppression. When it comes to the violence, it's absolutely real. The police discrimination that people feel is absolutely real, but it's not because the cops are terrible people, it's because they're uninformed. It's because they don't know anything about these issues, and they're going with the indoctrination that they have. So I think it's our role as a city council, or as a government, I should say, to enact these policies and ordinances that will train our local law enforcement, and then will show the public that we're training our local law enforcement in these areas, so that when injustice does occur, they'll know that that person was warned. Thank you.
Well, I'd say a couple things. First of all, there has been an absolute overwhelming amount of evidence that when body cameras are worn and cameras are on vehicles, that the police behave better, and so do the citizens they have contact with. And while I am a strong advocate for more public safety, I would not advocate any additional funds for more people until the ones that we have all have cameras, and the cars all have cameras. The second aspect to that is, is that the police ought to look like the community they serve. So, you know, there should probably be an effort on the police department to have members of the G, L, B, G, T, Q plus, I'm going to learn that acronym, as police. We certainly want more people of colors police. We want our police to look just like all of us look. And everybody needs a camera. And I'm being told to stop, so talk to you later.
The comedy guy. I think we're pretty fortunate that we actually have a pretty, a pretty reasonable police force. When I talk to Chief O'Brien on occasion, or the chiefs before him, or the deputy chiefs, the one thing I always do stress is they're part of the community as well. Their families live here, their kids go to our schools. We haven't had any major issues. I'm sure we've had some that I'm aware of. I think we're fortunate in that respect, that we don't have some of the bigger city problems that exist in this world. We have a pretty diverse police department. I've ridden around with the police officers in the cars. I think that they all handle themselves very professionally, the ones I've been with. Everyone is treated the same when they're, when they're stopping somebody or talking to somebody. I'm sure there's experiences here that are different with that, but overall, I think our police are doing a good job. And they realize at this point, this, this group of police officers, this chief, that they are part of the community, and they're trying to stress that, and they're trying to stress that in the training of other officers. Thank you.
I'm about to begin, or I am beginning, probably the greatest journey, one of my great journeys, and it's not running for council. It's the fact that my daughter just graduated from the police academy. Did not see it coming. The perfect person we need in any police force, I have to say, because I'm her dad. But it's changed my whole viewpoint. It's given me a deep understanding of, you know, a gut feeling of what police officers have to do on a daily basis. It, you know, it doesn't make, it's not going to make me pro-blue or something overnight, but any more than I am. But it does give me an understanding of the training they've gone through, and I think that the fact that we have an academy right here at Butte College that trains all of the police from the New Oregon border to Sacramento gives us an opportunity to really look at the curriculum and tweak it to a way that we can, at least in the training aspect, in the screening aspect, we can come up with better police officers in the future.
Well, I'm going to have to give a nod to our current police chief, Chief O'Brien, who took over a little over a year ago. We did not have the level of response in the last three. The last three police chiefs did not live within the city limits. Our current police chief does. He's done an extraordinary job changing the morale and improve the police department. He's been extraordinary. And I can tell you, as a council member, when you're making the call after a national tragedy to pull your community together after Orlando, and when you're making calls to pull together a vigil, when you hear that the police chief is organizing the exact same thing, boy, that is heartwarming. And that has not always been the case in our community, so I have to applaud him for that. But, you know, it starts with the police department and the diversity of the community, and, and the city leadership. There are two ethnic minorities in the entire city senior administration. One of them is the city attorney, and he's under contract. He lives in Long Beach. And the other one is me, and I'm about the whitest Mexican person you've ever seen. So we're making great headway. I fought for cameras, body cameras, and we're finally getting those on our police department. And there are other issues. How do you do this in one minute or 60 seconds? So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I don't like that you're sitting right in front of me. I can't go over at all. So steps I would take, I have been tirelessly advocating for 40 hours of CIT training. That's Critical Incident Training. It's something that I think all of our police officers need. Currently, what the Chico Police Department gets is eight hours. And while that's a nice start, it does not address all of the issues. So I would like to see our police department move up to 40 hours of CIT training. You know, when we had the, the roundtable after the Orlando incident, there was a member of the community who said, "You haven't even addressed us by name." That there were five or six law enforcement people up there, and not one said LGBTQ at any point until someone called them on it. And that's what I think we need. I think it's, a lot of it is an education piece. I'm still learning to not make assumptions about someone's preferred pronouns. And so we need to be educating our police officers that calling people "you guys" is not really the way to get kind of in with the community, and that, that maybe is, is turning people off. So, look, I'm ignoring her right now.
Many other candidates have said the, the same thing, but I believe it starts with leadership. Leadership from the council, leadership from our chief. Setting the expectations for our police officers on what we expect and how they, how we expect them to interface with our community, and holding them accountable for that as well. We need to have professional police officers. Many of our police officers have advanced degrees. Many of them are involved in community service. I think that our sergeants, lieutenants, and deputy chiefs need to have that advanced training, and they are the role models. The community policing, getting out and understanding what the wants and the needs of our community are. They are not, they are the police of our community, and we get to define how they protect us. And it circles back to that leadership. If people are not, are feeling that they're not being treated fairly and justly, they need to have access to the decision-makers, so that we can enact policy and make sure that our police are policing us the way we want them to.
One of the roles in my, this community that I play is serving as the Chair of the Chico Police Community Advisory Board. That's a board that meets monthly. Trey Robinson is, also sits on that board. It's a board of diverse people in the community from all over, from the university, from behavioral health businesses, from different parts of the community, from service providers working on homeless issues. working on homeless issues, that meet every month to really tackle some of these issues. We, like Mr. Stone had said, we have a police chief who has this at the forefront of his mind, and we need to have, continue to have, police chiefs with the same, at the same caliber as we do with Chief O'Brien. He is somebody who has been, when incidents happen, is on the forefront, is on the phone calling various members of the community to get their input, to make sure that everything is transparent when it comes to the police department.
So it's a shame that this is happening in the world all over, not to, not just to one certain group of individuals, but I think training for the police department so they'll be sensitive to our needs and issues so that if we're involved in a hate crime or something that isn't right, that we can feel safe in order to go to report this, and we're not going to feel like we're the ones that are the criminals.
Okay, the second audience question, and this will start with John. List three concrete steps you will take during your term that will improve conditions for the LGBTQ+ community in Chico.
Okay. I love being put on the spot. The first concrete step that I would take is to, this is kind of a double step. One, I want to ensure that every effort was made to be certain that all police officers were wearing cameras and that all cars have cameras so that we no longer have he-said, she-said events in law enforcement. Along with that, the second one is, and I addressed it in the previous question, is I'd want to be certain that our city, and particularly our police, look like the community they serve. I'm not so certain that that's the case right now. Another concrete step I would take is to make certain that, as Carl pointed out, the 49 people that are actually running the city also look like the citizens of Chico. The color, the sexuality, the age, some of us old people are still okay. I'm out of time, so you'll have to talk to me one-on-one for more concrete steps. Thank you.
Could you repeat the question, please? Can you do it again?
Sorry. Distracted. List three concrete steps you will take during your term that will improve conditions for the LGBTQ+ community in Chico.
Basically, it all stems from the fact that you're part of the community that everyone's a part of. So it goes back to the whole public safety issues. It goes back to fair representation. It's you picking who you want on your city council. And it goes to the fact that if there's issues that come, you need to come to the city council and talk to us about them, that we need to address them. I mean, the committee issue's a great idea, and it's, and there are plenty of commissions now, but you do have to step forward and bring things to my attention, because I'm not aware of all the issues that you guys have. It's a new thing. I mean, it's not something that I'm most familiar with. Having said that, you're a member of the community, so everything that affects everybody else in this community affects you. And again, I'm going all over the public safety, but you've got fiscal responsibility. The city needs to be in a financial shape for all you guys for years to come. It also needs to be a place of jobs and job creation so that you guys can find jobs when you graduate college or move on and find your life. These are all important things. You're all part of the same community. Thank you.
I think that the current council is, I would have to say, I know it's not your favorite word, intolerant. I think that we have a chance with four of us to change the attitude that we're getting from the council these days. And so three concrete things? Well, three people you could elect. I think you need, for example, we had an atheist come speak at the beginning of one of our council meetings, and two of the council members purposely did not attend that part and came in after he gave you the invocation. And were snarky. They were sitting around giggling about it. So I, you know, I really do think that it starts with the city, starts with the council, and it's one that allows people to talk. This little light here, this red light that comes on, you get one or two or three minutes to speak? I would do away with that. I would let people have a conversation and come to a conclusion, same amount of time, but without having to feel like they have to do it in 60 seconds.
As you see the sign right there. Appreciated the irony. You know, I agree with Mr. Ori, and I'm glad that you brought up that incident with the atheist meeting. We had a council member who's a candidate who, again, is not here tonight and has never been here, who walked out during an invocation, a public invocation, a lawful, legal invocation before this council. I just don't, it blows me away, and we're expecting civility of some kind from that group. You know, you're right. Reelect your LGBTQ+ council member. We have one now, and I strongly support her. And reelect those that have a history of responsiveness to this community and this group. I can tell you who those three and four are. I would also implement and execute the Diversity Action Plan and take it off the shelf, as Councilmember Schwab mentioned. And I would also link the police chief with a routine meeting with LGBTQ+ folks. This is what I learned, I'm the president of the League of California Cities, I represent 57 cities in the North State, and I'm also on a committee, a statewide committee. This is the way we solve problems. We get together, we meet, and we discuss what's going on in our communities, and that's what my suggestion would be.
It's 20 seconds a step you're giving us here. So I agree on the updating and enacting our Diversity Action Plan. It is really the only guiding document that we have that says this is important. This is important to our community, this is important to us, and so important that we're going to create a guiding document to tell us how to do it. So that's the first thing that I think we would need to commit to should we be reelected. The second is, I'll continue to advocate and to participate in all of the community events that I have participated in for the last four years with my colleagues, and to continue to say that this is important. This matters to us. This community matters to us. The greater Chico community matters, and we want to hear your concerns. And so that's only two things, but 60 seconds is not adequate.
In order to get any changes done that would benefit the LBGQ community, we need to have four council members and a majority so that we can enact those. So those four council members, Tammy Ritter, Randall Stone, Carl, Ori, and myself, can take that Diversity Action Plan off the shelf so that we can do outreach for boards and commissioners, so that we can do outreach for hiring, and I would be committed to that. Those four council members could have gender-neutral restrooms policy and make steps going forward so that could be a reality in Chico. And we could enact a policy that our police officers participate in the 40-hour CIT training. But it's important to have four council members who are going to fight for more open LGBTQ policies and attitude in this community.
Crime seeks the most vulnerable in our community. That is a big issue. Crime doesn't necessarily focus on other things but the most vulnerable. We need a police staffing plan that's fully implemented. We need a minimum staffing level. We are, from that minimum, we are at a deficit of 12 police officers. So the first step that I would take would be to implement and fund the police staffing plan. The second step is what I mentioned earlier, is the tone of our politics. It's not enough to point the finger to those who are not here for whatever reason. We need to look at ourselves and say, how are we contributing to a constructive, collaborative, bipartisan council? And the third one, I'll have to do that some other time.
I believe it's more than just three steps. This is more like an escalator that keeps going on and on and on. We really need to break down the barriers so that we all come together as a community through education. I don't believe the problem is with the young people today. They have no issues if someone has two moms, two dads. To them, they're just people. I think it's the older people that we need to educate so they can feel comfortable. A lot of people look at the flag here, and the colors represent something really beautiful, but other people look at that and they feel just really afraid, they don't understand. And I think that's why they kind of react the way they do. So we need to really educate these people to make them more sensitive to everybody's needs so we can come together. And should I just ramble on until I get the stop sign right there? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Three concrete steps to ensure justice for LGBTQ+ communities. First thing is housing first. We have such a huge housing crisis in this community, and winter is coming. It's happening. We need to implement that immediately as a council, as a community, so that LGBTQ+ youth are not further shut out from the communities that won't have enough space to house them. That's the first concern. Second concern is ensuring that all the service providers and the nonprofits that are working for justice, social justice issues, are able to connect with each other and know, one hand knows what the other hand is doing, so we reduce burnout of these passionate volunteers that we have in our wonderful, engaged community. That's the second thing. Third thing is, we need to start physically attending community gatherings and listen to these concerns and stop giving in to this denial that the concerns are there, thinking that, well, Chico's beautiful, and we don't have these concerns, there's no racism, there's no sexism, there's no heteronormativity going on. Yes, there is, and I think it's very important to acknowledge that, just your circle is in all of Chico. Thanks.
Okay, we've come to the part where each of you has drawn a name of another candidate, and you are going to get to ask a question of that candidate. Sue will call on the questioner, who has, well, the whole segment's 90 seconds, okay? We are encouraging you not to, we encourage you to ask a question and not give a statement that appears to be a question. Okay? You can, you can ask, I hope, things that were raised tonight, and not necessarily other things, but you can ask any question you wish. The other comment I'm going to make is that for those of you who are running for this office, incumbent council members do not have time limits during the council meetings, so everything you didn't get to say tonight, you will be able to say at your very first council meeting. Sue?
Okay, so just a reminder, we have set a 30-second time limit to ask the questions, so if you can formulate that quickly. And then we'll give the chance for the person to respond one minute. So since we can't see your papers, if you can just direct your question by name so that everyone in the audience knows who you're directing that question at. And the first questioner, so the first person to ask a question will be Jeffrey Glass.
So this question's for Ann. The real question I want to ask is, how do you deal with Carl taking credit, I mean, Randall taking credit for everything in the city? But the real question I want to ask, you've been on past city councils before, you've had a majority in that city council before. Now you're saying you can't do anything because you don't have the majority. Why can you not do anything now that you could, why couldn't you do anything before that you have now? Why do you need a new one? You didn't do anything before, so why is it changing?
It takes a majority vote to enact ordinances, policies, and the council is very divided. I have tried to advocate for positions and have the conservative council members vote in support of things that I'm advocating, but I'm not seeing much movement. Let me tell you something that happened. There was a proposal to name our municipal building and the plaza after one of our past city managers. Noble thing to do. I suggested that we named one of them after the former city manager, so there would be an opportunity at another time to name the other place over somebody else. Could not get the council members to change their mind, and one of them said to me later, said, "I wish I could have joined you, but my supporters were in the audience and I couldn't change my vote."
All right, thank you. So the next questioner will be Carl Ori.
But that's not quite the question I asked.
So Jeffrey, the answer is not. You talked about public safety. We read in the paper today that 15 firefighters may be let go, and some of your general statements, I think, suggest that you want more police, too. How are you going to pay for police and fire?
Thank you, Carl. I just met with Ken the other day from the fire department, and he was talking about that issue and trying to clue me in on what's going on with the loss of the grant. Having said that, they knew they were losing the grant going in, so it was going to be an issue. I believe the city is now working with them on a temporary situation that's supposed to hold them through July. I don't know if this hasn't been approved or anything like that, but they are working with Mark Orman, the city council, to come up with a plan to keep things going through July so a longer-term solution can be found. But you're right, the fire department and the police are part of public safety. You can't just take care of the police department without taking care of the fire department. It is something that, there is no money, so the quickest way to do that, of course, is to manage what you have, what limited amount of money you have, so maybe there has to be some cuts, maybe not the complete cuts. I'm trying to see how much more time I have. But longer-term solutions, you can fix this by growing your economy, increasing your tax base. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next questioner will be Randall Stone.
This question is for Giovanni Tracere. You sir advocated for a, I believe it was pretty close to a 25% pay increase for our police department at their most recent contract negotiations. And based on that pay raise and their initial proposal, which was much higher than the pay raise that they received, how is it that you propose to continue to expand the Chico Police Staffing Plan, of which I made the motion for? How are you suggesting that we should pay for those police officers that have an average cost fully loaded at $166,000 per year?
First of all, I did not have the opportunity to vote on that, so I would have, so I'm not sure where you brought that out, but I don't recall advocating for that. What I am advocating for is the fully staffing the police department. We need more police officers, quite simply. And I have, in the 2014 Police Staffing Plan, I put together as well some suggestions to the city council that we need in order to fund the police department. That included looking at a franchise agreement with our waste haulers. That included brokering some partnerships with the Chico Unified School Districts, for instance, to help cover at least half of the cost of the school resource officers. That included looking at other ways that we could, as a community, fill in those funding gaps. Those suggestions, none of those have been addressed by the current city council, so I want a shot at it. We can do this.
All right, thank you. The next questioner is Tammy Ritter.
My question is for John Scott.
Oh, boy.
John, tell us how you would address the issues surrounding homelessness that you have been so eloquent about speaking of.
Well, one of the things that I've noticed about homeless people in general, and I use the word homeless to encapsulate transient, homeless, those with mental issues that maybe have them on the street, is that generally speaking, they don't have a lot of money and they don't have transportation. And so I think it would be beneficial to the community at large, as well as those affected directly, that is, the homeless people, if all the resources that they needed tended to be centered in one place. For example, and I'm not suggesting this is the precise solution, but say that we had various community resources set up around the Torres Center so that when homeless were there sleeping, you know, during the day, they could get access to the different community resources. the different community resources they needed to improve their lives. And I'm running out of time, because I could, I could have more to that. Great question. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And the next questioner is Ann Schwab.
Yes, and my question is for Mercedes Masias.
Masias.
Masias, thank you for making that correction.
Sure.
I've really enjoyed hearing your ideas of how to open up dialogue in the community and some fresh perspective on things. However, one thing you said tonight is, it's not what government can do, it's what individuals can do. So I'm kind of a two-part question. Curious as to why you want to run for council, which is government, and what in your background may suggest how you've had any experience developing strategies to address issues?
Sure. Thank you for the very long question. So the government is supposed to be representative of the people. If the government's not listening to what the people are saying, the government's not being a representative government. It's not a grassroots participatory democracy. So when I say that, what I mean is that it's the people that should be directing the government. When the government takes it upon themselves to enforce their own ideals, their personal ideals, on the people, that's not representation, that's not government. And I'm personally very interested in empowering people to realize how important they are and how much their vote matters. And so that is why I said that. As far as my personal experience, as you'll see in the voter sample ballots, I am designated as a community volunteer. That means that even though I work three jobs, I still volunteer more than I work. So I'm very active in finding out what the issues are and listening to people and learning how I can be a better voice for whoever it is that comes to me or whatever concerns I learn about. When the issue of marriage equality first came up, I was indoctrinated into the Roman Catholic Church. I voted against that. I've thus far educated myself, and I suggest that everybody continue to do that. Thanks.
All right. The next questioner will be Giovanni Tracari.
So I pulled Lisa.